Good morning. And welcome to our November 2nd County Commissioners Meeting. Please stand for the questions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father, for whom his name is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
In our prayer for the morning, Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Steve, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of our Commissioner meeting and our public hearing?
Sure. I move to approve the minutes for October 26th.
Second.
And just to clarify, that is for the public hearing and the Commissioners meeting?
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you. We'll move into our resolutions, and first up, we have Amy Lyon Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I have 18 resolutions to present for finance for your consideration, and then I have one for HR, so I'll do finance first. First resolution is amending the 2021 Appropriations Resolution by transferring appropriations. The second is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The third is revenue adjustments for various funds. The fourth resolution is a cash transfer. These are for various funds, including for the bond retirement, for the paying of those two bonds in December. The fifth is authorizing the cash transfer for the Social Service Levy Fund. This is the second half of calendar year 21. The sixth resolution is the creation of a tuberculosis prevention and control fund for fiscal year 21 and authorizing appropriations. The seventh resolution is the creation of the Corsa Cyber Grant Fund and authorizing The eighth is the creation of the Sheriff's Office Ohio 911 Local Grant Fund and authorizing appropriations. The ninth resolution is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The 10th is approving Amendment Number Two to the agreement with Airmark Correctional Services Incorporated for food service at the jail and the detention center. This is just the annual adjustment they're able to recognize through the contract for CPI for pricing. The 11th resolution is approving a contract for the provision of dental services for the Medina County Jail. The 12th is accepting the HEAP program funding for the Office for Older Adults for state fiscal year 2022. The 13th resolution is amending the self-insured workers' compensation funding rate. This would be an increase of .25 percent, taking it from .75 percent up to 1 percent. The 14th resolution is approving a contractual engagement with the Auditor of State Local Government Services Division for assistance in the preparation of the comprehensive annual financial report, which is the CAFER, commonly referred to, for 2021. 15th resolution is approving an agreement with Maximus Incorporated to provide professional consulting services for Medina County. This is a renewal of a three-year agreement. 16th is authorizing the purchase of beverages and refreshments for various planning department meetings in '21 and '22. The 17th is allowing expenses of county officials. And the 18th resolution to complete those for finance is approval of claims for the week in the amount of $1,855,788.39.
Move to approve the 18 resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you, Amy.
And if I may?
Now you're doing your HR one, okay.
Okay. It's approving personnel changes, which includes one new hire at the office for older adults, an appointment change in finance, four rate increases, two at job and family services, and two at sanitary, three leaves of absence, two in sanitary, and one in transit, and a retirement in sanitary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Five resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with Jones &amp; Henry Engineers for Professional Design Services. This is to help create the base map and preliminary design for the sanitary sewer replacement on Medina Road. The second is allowing for the disposal of a 2006 International Hook Truck for the Solid Waste District. This is to satisfy the requirements of a 2019 diesel mitigation grant that we were awarded. The third is creating a restricted water main on Windfall Road. This is the church over at, on Windfall there, had the water main extended to provide service to them. This is just giving them a way to recoup some of their construction costs. The fourth is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with Davy Resource Group for Professional Design Services for riverbank stabilization. This is for a separate river project. This is over on River Styx Road on the Rustic Hills Golf Course. We had a manhole that was outside the riverbank at one point, now it's in the river. So this is just to rebuild that riverbank. And the last one is authorizing the transfer of funds between various sanitary engineer funds and county funds.
Move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks.
We'll move into our department updates. The first update is from Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director.
Good morning, Shan.
Good morning. My report is for September. I was attending a conference last week for ODOT. Got a lot of good information, so this is for September. Our ridership, on average, we're tracking it for the year and seeing some similarities from year over year, but a difference in our demand service and fixed route. Our total, on average, per month is decreased by about 713, so that's about 596 for demand and 117 for fixed route. So what we're seeing is a slight decline, and I have reported that ridership has increased, but it's also gone down month over month. So those are the averages. So we're down about 713 trips on average per month for the year so far. The world changes, so we'll see how it goes for the remainder of the year. On a budgetary basis, we're in good shape. We're tracking fuel costs very closely and trying to respond to some of the things that are happening out there with the market. We're also looking at some of our ridership and some of the cities changing. Wattsworth has increased slightly over this last year, so we're seeing some increases there on a positive note. They just have one bus on the fixed route, but the demand service seems to be picking up, so that's a good sign there. Also, just wanted to mention a couple of the things we have going on. We had a training, Safety and Training Day with the help of many people. Some aren't in this room, but Holly and her team, Dawn Frye, Nicole came on a Saturday and attended a safety training for all of our employees. It was, you know, a donut coffee, a good bonding moment, I think, where we got to see there was a garage group that we moved in. I was trying to keep it in three different groups, so it was fun, but some groups spent time in the garage, learning about some of our, reinforcing some of our things about the cleaning supplies they have and the expectations on how to use these properly, securing a mobility device, some safety questions about buses that we clarified. And then the other group was in the break room. We set up two computers for the new payroll system for our employees. Some of them had some challenges with it. We, Holly and her team, did a really good job, get everybody very comfortable with looking up their pay stubs and that sort of thing. And then the other group moved into the offices, and we talked about scheduling. We had a great administrative conversation about what it's like to be in dispatch for the driver, because they don't, they may or may not know. That was really helpful, and we got a lot of questions answered. We updated our employee handbook and gave it out and answered a lot of questions, so it really was a good day. It was a couple hours very well spent. I was very happy with it, and great attendance and good feedback from the drivers. Yeah, they really liked it. I think it's going to be an annual thing. I really enjoyed doing it, and I think everybody got a lot out of that, so. A couple things that are also going on, we're working on a web hosting solution for our tablets that are coming, that are on order, but I'm hesitant to say they're here because of shipping things. You know, they could be here tomorrow, could be here hopefully soon, but the IT department and Susan have been very helpful in making sure we get the right technology, the right hardware to integrate with our software. So I'll have some more updates on that, just a heads up. But we are going to work on a web hosting solution rather than an in-house server. It seems like a popular thing, and cost savings is on the long run. The other thing I will say is there's some conversations with ODOT about vehicle shortages. We've had meetings about vehicle shortages, so across the state, some folks are asking, can you share a bus? Obviously, not in that position, but if it comes to the point where we have to get a bus, they're talking about some sort of surplus. I'm not sure if we're going to qualify for much of it, but there's a lot of talk about sharing vehicles, and if you retire one, don't give it away, you know, make do. We're in good shape. Stephen's team has done a really good job of, you know, proactively maintenance in our vehicles, so we're very comfortable. Till we make that next vehicle purchase, we're going to work on some grant funding in the spring and find out which vehicles we want, and that segues into the, I made contact with our vendor for OHM Advisors for our consulting for the strategic plan. That's, I'm just really excited about personally, because I think that's really going to make us take a good hard look at what the need is and measure some things. I think we know some things. I like what Amy says is going to confirm some things. I really enjoy talking with her about that, and I'm really, really happy about that. The other thing I want to mention is I wrote, I mentioned this to Amy, I rode the South Circular, you know, the trip out through Palm Springs. I counted all the homes that we actually service. It's 59 homes. Now, that's farms. It's a large area. We cover that on Tuesdays. I talked to some of the families that ride. They really, really depend on us. It's an interesting group. I saw cabbage being picked up. They work hard. I enjoyed the day, spending the morning and seeing what they're going through and talking with them. I wanted to make sure we didn't lose, we really captured what they're looking for in our strategic plan. So that's basically my report for the month. Things are looking good. We obviously going into the winter months, so we're talking about a lot of safety things and making sure we're focused on the safety of our passengers and the buses.
So Shannon, if I recall, last time you indicated that you were pre-ordering vehicles to get ahead of that curve.
Right.
But it seems that we're in the curve along with a whole lot of others. Is there any, or what is the risk that as we go into 2022?
Right.
That you're going to have vehicles that need to be retired, and we may not have the new vehicle there? Or are we situated fairly well with the vehicles that we have that we can at least keep going?
I feel very comfortable we can keep them going. We applied for five vehicles, about $400,000. We were awarded one, which means ODOT's saying, you have the vehicles, you're not, you're not as bad off as other people when it comes to funding allocation, but obviously your mileage and, you know, it's 150,000 mile. We're hovering right around that with a few vehicles, and we've done some mileage balancing to make sure that we don't, we maintain these vehicles as long as we can. So I'm pretty comfortable until we can order. I think the chip shortage is going to catch up with the demand, is what ODOT's talking about. They're talking about the first, the rest of this year, and a little bit of next year. Now, ODOT's guessing, of course, I think. They're trying to put it positively, but I think with maintenance, I think we can feel very comfortable with what we've had. We've done some wheelchair lift refurbishments, some seats for the drivers. Big deal to put some seats in a bus. Our supervisor was adamant about it. We got the new foam, got them put in, and it really helped the driver. They felt good about it. We took their feedback from it. So right now, I think we're okay, but I think when we go to order, hopefully we're in the flow a little bit more. But I was hoping to have that funding in place, Bill, to be honest with you, and I think that's, that told us that, you know, we could wait for the funding a little longer and then, and get it. And also, the strategic plan's going to tell us what type of vehicle. We talked about, microtransit is a very popular word. Ultimately, it's more what I call flexible transportation. You can use the same vehicles and be flexible. We talked about secure mobility devices. We need to be able to do that. So a smaller vehicle may not meet all the need, and we're looking for, you know, four to five passengers per hour on our fixed route. So we can do that. I think the technology has been proven now with us to be able to look at something with our strategic plan, to really put us in a position where we attract new riders and we take care of the people who already have. So vehicles will always be a challenge, but this year it's been, state contract has been stop, start, stop, start, because they can't commit. If you're through a state contract, they make commitments through your procurement process, and they're hesitant. I met with one of the vendors at the conference that I was just at, and he says, you can have this one, but not this one. Well, that's the one nobody's buying.
Right.
This was on.
The one they have a lot of.
Yes. It's like, yeah, you like these, right? Yeah, no, we need smaller vehicles. The bigger ones are a little bit of a surplus, so.
How's the Easy Fair going?
Easy Fair's going really well. We've been talking a little bit about how to encourage our local agencies to utilize it. I'll have more information when we talk again next, but it's, it's a, it's a system that you have to have a card, a smart card, we're calling it. We've ordered some on a preliminary basis as a pilot. It's been through the grant, so we're, said no cost to us, but it's a credit card or it's a thinner card. We ordered two different versions of it, to see if some of the agencies would be willing to pass, give these out to their, you know, their folks and allow them to use the Easy Fair with a smart card rather than a smartphone. Now, they can use a smartphone or a smart card. So I think the smart card's a big introduction. I think education is a huge introduction, and I, I believe that we're going to make it more seamless for the customers if they understand what the card is for. We can, you know, it's a billing process in it that we've had for a long, long time, so we're going to reverse engineer that a little bit and make sure we're accurate, but it's a better reporting feature. It's a better, we go through some.
But they can use their smartphone, too, right?
Smartphone, that's right, yeah. And we see it as high as 15, 16 percent of our total sales each month. We got it that high. It's dipped a little bit, but it's, it's in the 10 to 12 percent range. The same people are buying the monthly pass on it. There's a monthly pass, and they just constantly use it, or the demand's just an individual and they're using it. So we're seeing sales from it. The technology's wonderful. I really like the idea that we are a smaller transit agency that gets the benefit because of our partnerships with NeoRide to really get involved and not have to front all those upfront design costs and technology costs. But technology is, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not perfect. You know, some of the cradle points we have, losing connectivity, but they're a very strong signal. So we're really working with our partners to make sure everything works, because you don't want to put a hang on the bus that is not solid. But the proven technology, it's really good. I love the Easy Fair, and I think more and more people. It's basically, I rode the 18 Express. I met a young man named Trey, who has been riding since he was five or six years old, from what I understand, and his mom told him about, he goes to Akron U, and he's going to be an engineer, and he rides the bus three days a week on the 18 Express, and he could not stop talking about, I don't know what I do. So he really, really bragged on the 18 Express. He said it's a little bit of a trip, but he says, I just get on my phone, you know, so he likes, he liked it. But he used the, he said, yeah, I could, it's real easy to do this. Younger people really got it quickly, so Trey was wonderful to talk to.
Good, good. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions?
Yep.
Thank you, Shannon.
Gave you a lot of information.
Very good reports.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Next up, we have Denise Testa, our Planning Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Denise.
Okay, well, we last met in September, so it's been a while, early September, so it's been a couple months. From January through October, we've reviewed 26 majors with over 1,200 sublots for our county, 38 minors creating 74 sublots, so we're well over 1,300 sublots for our calendar year. For, you probably saw our November staff report, so we are reviewing one preliminary plan extension, five major subs, one text amendment, two map amendments, so we'll have a busy meeting tomorrow. For our November concept plan meeting, we have four concept plans this month, so we're very excited to review. Two in Granger, two in Sharon, and then for.
Any idea how many lots are in those, roughly?
You know, we just received those.
Okay, that's fine.
I know, I know the one has six sublots, for example. The other three, I believe, probably are averaging around 15 or 20. So yes, it will be another busy month, but for December, we have two projects for December right now for a Planning Commission meeting, so one subdivision in Sharon and then a Homer text amendment. Moving forward, we are working with ODOT on a conceptual access plan in Sharon Township south of Fixler, north of Reimer Road, because we currently have five subdivisions in that corridor in our queue right now. So we're coordinating and collaborating with ODOT. We will then plan a meeting with the stakeholders in that community to talk about that access plan as well. Noaca visited for the EV charging station in our parking lot on September 29th, and we're just waiting to hear from Noaca about more details regarding that project. I was honored to present a planning and zoning workshop in Hinkley last week, so that went very well, and I'm looking forward to presenting in Westfield Township on December 8th. Finally, our comprehensive plan assistance program, I had mentioned in September that I was going to contact our cities, villages, and townships to determine how many are interested in revising their plans. We estimate between 13 and 15 communities are looking at revising either their comprehensive plan or their zoning resolutions for fiscal year 2022. I did receive an application for Hinkley Township for this fiscal year. We currently have $4,432 remaining in the account, so I will forward a recommendation regarding Hinkley to you this week for consideration at next week's Commissioner meeting. So with that in mind, are there any questions? Whew, take a break.
A lot of activity, yes.
That, between Reimer and Fixler, going to be a boom for the new Sharon Elementary School.
It is. Well, the issue there is the access management policies of ODOT.
Right. I believe on a state route, their threshold is one quarter of a mile between access points, so with, and, and the parcels that are being developed are literally stacked upon one another, and there's currently houses that have access. There's a large church in that area as well, I believe.
So they have access to 94, or are they going to have access to Fixler or Reimer?
Well, these are, it's in between Fixler and Reimer. They are not adjacent to Fixler and Reimer.
Yeah, it's 94, yeah.
So the issue, they all come on 94, and many of them, they want to keep the farmhouses, and they want to keep the houses with access.
Right.
And the adjoining properties, they want new access.
Correct.
So ODOT has that policy, which is, no, you can get a new one if you get rid of the old one.
Right.
If they keep them, and it creates a problem of.
And, right. And right in that.
Between each subdivision.
Correct. And just in that corridor, I analyzed how many access points are currently in existence, and I would estimate between 30 and 40 right now, just in that one mile corridor.
Right, but they'll, for young families, that brand-new grade school's right there, that'll be a very desirable area.
Sure.
That's good.
Highland District, yes. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have that resolution.
Oh, yes. Did you want to, we have one, one resolution from planning?
What, is, oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, this is not, it's in regard to Yellow Creek Conservancy?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Do you want us to do that?
Sure, you can, you can do that, yes.
Okay, so this is a.
I had two resolutions, and, okay, good deal.
This is a resolution in opposition to the formation of a conservancy court leading to the creation of the Yellow Creek Conservancy District, and we spoke about this at last week's meeting and agreed that we would have a resolution expressing our desire to oppose it.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you, Denise. Next up, we have Del Saffel, our Dog Warden. Good morning, Del.
Good morning. A lot has changed since my budget hearing the other day, but give me a few updates. Our placement rate last year, we were at 99.9 percent, basically. This year, it looks like we're going to be in the high 90s also. We're doing very well with options. We put dogs on the internet, like I said before, 10, 15 minutes, people are calling to come and see them. We have dogs almost, last three weeks, every two or three days, we're doing drawings. We have, at 10 o'clock when we open, we have five or six people that want the same dogs, so we'll hand out tickets and draw numbers, and we've done that three or four times the last couple weeks in a row. The adoptions are going very good. I thought maybe with the COVID, things would go the other way, we'd start getting a lot of heads, but we're averaging eight to 14 dogs a week, but it goes down to eight and we go back to 14, so adoptions are going very well. So this year, it looks like we're going to be in the high 90s also for replacement rate. Some updates on the repairs. The outside kennels, we had repaired, we had some gates and posts that was rotting out. Maintenance did it, they did a great job on it. That was paid for with the money that was donated last year from the local breweries of Medina County, so we used that money, and it was paid for and done. The stack on incinerator was getting really rusty, and I was afraid that if we let it go too much longer, it's going to fall apart. Maintenance came out again, sanded it, painted it, put a new stack, a new top piece on it. The screen mesh stuff on it was redone. It looks really great. I think that'll last us quite a few more years now. Money-wise, we're still down around $20,000 due to the penalties that was delayed. We delayed the penalties from February to January for licenses, dog licenses. We lost around $20,000 for that, but at the end of the year, I think we're still going to be okay budget-wise, just we're going to be a little bit lower than expected. New hire, we hired a new assistant dog warden in August. She's, she's in place. She's worked there years ago, and it's about seven years ago she was there, and she moved out of state, so she came back, working out really well, training her in some of the newer stuff, but she's catching on really good. Everything's working out really good. Everything's covered. We're there. Somebody's there, seven days a week, even on holidays, we go in and take care of the dogs and everything. That's about it. Everything's going really well.
So Del, just to clarify, the dogs that are not adopted are euthanized, correct? And we only do that to dogs that are, say vicious or not.
Correct.
Not suitable for a family or an environment where they would typically be adopted into?
Correct. Last year, we had 237 dogs. We put down one, and that was a dog that was bit. If it has a bite history or it's vicious towards us or it bites us, that's something that we don't want to adopt back now. This year, we had to do two. It was a bite dog. That's all we put down. Any other ones? They're pretty much there until they get adopted. As long as they don't turn or get mean or bite us, we hold them to their adoption.
But that's a last resort.
Right.
It's only for the dogs that are not safe to be adopted.
Yep. And that's helped out, I mean, we said, 99.9 percent last year, we adopted everything but the one dog, and that was the bite dog.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Del. I appreciate the update. We'll move into the Commissioner Resolutions, and we have four of them this morning. The first resolution is supporting Medina Fibers Ohio Residential Broadband Expansion Grant Application, and this is in conjunction with the Rain Medina Rural Electoral Cooperative. Second resolution is appointing members to the Transportation Improvement District, and those members are Jeff Brandon, Greg Crane, Bethany Dentler, Rick Monroe, and Conrad Sarnowski. And then there are certain non-voting members, which will be Andy Conrad, Denise Testa, and and those members are Jeff Brandon, Greg Crane, Bethany Dentler, Rick Monroe, and Conrad Sarnowski, and then there are certain non-voting members, which will be Andy Conrad, Denise Testa, and Anthony Raditzak. The third resolution is appointing members to the Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Board of Trustees, and we will be appointing Kathy Breitenbacher and Jill Tubel to that board. And the last resolution is a resolution to regulate engine brake noise, and this is a resolution that applies throughout the county. Anywhere that we have complaints regarding engine brake noise and allows the county administrator in conjunction with the county engineer to approve the posting of signs.
Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Let's just point out that fourth one, that actually it also particularly mentions the Columbia Road north of State Route Forty-two and south of Smith Road as part of the resolution, where we had the residents' complaint.
And on the first one, I'm thrilled that we're working towards getting our underserved areas served with the broadband.
Yes, and that is the resolution regarding the broadband, and that really, Lorraine Medina Rural Electric is focused in the western and southwestern parts of Medina County, and that enables us to hang, enables Medina Fiber to hang fiber optics cables on their poles. Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Roll call, please, Ron.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Next, we'll go to public comment. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? No? Hearing none, we'll move on, or Steve, we need a motion to go into executive session, post discussion.
Yeah, following discussion, I would move that we go into executive session to consider the compensation of public employees and the appointment of a public officials.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Okay, so we'll go into discussion session, so, Del, do you have anything else? Jeremy?
Just wanted to bring you up to speed here. Columbia Road, the Riverbank Project there, we secured the last easement at the end of last week, so that's great news there, and then we have two remaining soil borings that need to be completed, which should be done at the end of this week, and then they can, Davy Reach sources should be able to complete the design of that project, so we are moving forward with that. Over at the Solid Waste District, eighty-seven thirty building renovation, furniture should be delivered on Monday, so that's, it'll be nice to have some furniture in there, and we're-
Yeah, we had a meeting there yesterday afternoon, it was a stand-up meeting.
It wasn't. Leaned up against the walls.
It did have to be short.
Couple box crates.
Yeah.
So, and then we're just going through some final punch list items there as well. And then also, we had budgeted for another hook truck next year as part of the 2019 Diesel Mitigation Grant. I wanted to know if I'd have support to go ahead with the lead time of the trucks for purchasing, if you would have an issue with us moving forward, at least getting the quote and getting that process moving.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Okay, okay. And then the last thing here is, we have our Veterans Breakfast on Wednesday, November 10th at eight oh five, and we have, looks like, twenty-seven county veterans that had RSVP'd for that, so that should be a good time, so.
How are we doing with the EMA project moving forward?
We got the design, the redesign based on comments from last week done, so we're just gonna go through and start getting the spec book together and get that going soon.
Excellent.
Thanks, Jeremy.
No problem, thanks.
Scott?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just wanted to give you a quick update on the courthouse, so I don't know if you've seen it recently, but the elevator shafts are up, the staircase on the south, and the east is up, and they've started on the staircase on the north side, and they've also started the connection to the eighteen forty-one courthouse. All of the underground utilities are done, with the exception of, they had an issue with the gas lines. There's gas lines on the south and the north, but they're low pressure, so we actually had to move a gas line from the front of courthouse on Broadway up around the corner and down to the building. They could've brought it, well, they could've brought it north, but then we would've had to have ran the gas line through the building to the north where the mechanical room is, and we didn't wanna do that. Is that really expensive, because you would've had to weld all the pipes and everything, so. So, there wasn't, there weren't a lot of unexpected items, you know, and when they excavated, they ran into their old jail foundation, that was a small problem. You know, we have an owner's contingency that we've had access, about $280,000, but that owner's contingency is still part of that $29 million price, so I think we're good there. I did talk to, well, I talked briefly with Mayor Hanwell last week, he was on vacation, he was in Florida, so I didn't talk to him for a long time, but I did talk to him, and we are going to start talking about the agreement and kind of where we wanna go with that. I still am waiting, I had some information from Gilbane as far as shared space, and one of the, part of this agreement will be those shared spaces between the county and the city, will be the cost we shared also, so the entry, the holding areas, those places, and also obviously the landscaping, all be shared cost, so we'll be moving on that. Also, we got, about a month ago, you authorized me to let out for move consultant proposals. I received those, I've gotten there down to two, I'm still waiting, I have one coming back to do a tour, or to re-tour the courthouse, because I'm additional information from them, but I hope to have a contract, or at least award the contract sometime within the next couple of weeks, so that's going well, too.
When, when would the move be, wait till after the building's complete, or would we move before that?
No, what we do is, we'd probably move in phases, so once the building is complete, we would move the furniture into the building, and then move clerks over, move records over, and then move the courts over. We have to limit the downtime of the courts, I've talked to some of the courts, and there's no way they can, you know, shut down for a week.
Right.
So, it'll be in phases. The ones, the ones I've talked to, move consultants I've talked to, you know, it shouldn't be a long process, there aren't that many employees, and there's just, there's just a lot of paper, a lot of records that need to be moved, so that should go, but I should have something for you within the next couple of weeks.
So, Scott, I mean, the actual move will not take place until the end of 2022, right?
December, December, January, yeah, and it's gonna be, it's, in my opinion, it's complex, because you have to move the court of common pleas, and juvenile court, and probate court, and adult probation, you know, all into the new courthouse. Once they're moved to the new courthouse, and we have to move Domestic Relations Court into the nineteen sixty-nine courthouse, so we have to, you know, part of what the move consultants will do is they'll help us determine, you know, what the furniture that's needed by Domestic Relations Court in the sixty-nine courthouse, so we, they can just, we can have everything set up and they can just move in, and then once that's, and then we have to move the furniture out of the sixty-nine courthouse, or probably, or the eighteen forty-one courthouse, and we'll probably move that into the sixty-nine courthouse and just store it there.
While the renovations-
While the renovations being done in eighteen forty-one courthouse, yeah, and then we'll get the furniture in eighteen forty-one courthouse, then move them in, then any remaining furniture in the sixty-nine courthouse will sell or dispose of, and then the city can take it over and start their renovations, so. We wanna, we wanna make it fairly quick, because we don't want a lot of downtime, especially for the renovation in eighteen forty-one courthouse, so it's gonna have to be fairly quick, quick move.
Did they ever give us an anticipated how many months on eighteen forty-one?
It's, it should be completed in the middle of 2023, June, May, June, but, you know, we, with the underground utilities and everything that we've done, you know, there were some surprises, underground, you don't know exactly what you're gonna run into, we shouldn't have any surprises until we get to eighteen forty-one courthouse, because once we start renovating eighteen forty-one courthouse, we don't know everything we're gonna run into, so, so it'll be interesting, but yeah, about six months, okay? And then, excuse me, and then, just real quick, we started looking at the budget, I know that we want to get you something sooner rather than later. I've met with Drew and Amy, and we've talked about current year, where we're at, and projecting for next year, revenue-wise, I think the projections that we have are pretty close, but they may be a little conservative for next year, so we are-
I can't imagine that.
You are always conservative.
We are reevaluating that, and then we should have something to you, hopefully sooner rather than later.
So, any, any high-level preliminary view of just total what was submitted as far as an increase over last year?
Oh, it was significant, I mean, it's, you saw the board of elections and the sheriff and, yeah, the requests were significant. If we gave everybody exactly what they wanted, and we had the revenues as budgeted, we would definitely need to earn our fund balance by a couple million dollars, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, so they expect that we have to scale back?
We have to scale back, yeah, yeah, so that's, and looking at it, you know, again, I think the revenues that we have projected for next year that we did in August or July, I think they're pretty close, but again, I think they're, might be a little conservative, so we're just gonna reevaluate that, and looking at the budgets, I think there's places we can cut, so we'll be fine, so.
Some of the apartments were very reasonable, too.
Very reasonable, yes, yes, I was pleasantly surprised at the budget requests that we received, so.
All right, good, very good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. Shannon? Denise? John? Amy? Christina? Steven? Steve?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up, we do have a modified proposal from Lorraine Medina Rural Electric for the use of the ARPA funds for their headquarters. Originally, you may recall, they originally had asked for money for the ARPA for a roadway, and realized, it was communicated to them that would not be eligible. However, given what's been, the discussions and the agreement working between Medina Fiber and LMRE, they modified their proposal to include in the construction of that building, they're asking for funds to help fund the, a, well, for, actually for the fiber project entirely, a pole building as well as a garage, one of the garage bays for that purpose. It would be tied to the Medina, the agreement with Medina Fiber for LMRE, so hence, it would be eligible, at least that'd be up to Amy to help verify, that would be eligible for the ARPA funding, because specifically it would be for those purposes of the broadband expansion in that area. I'd like that we discuss that next week, if that'd be possible, to go through that, and then maybe put it on the schedule for approval, but of course, that's pending an agreement between Medina Fiber and LMRE for the overall project.
How much do you-
They wanted six eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty, I think.
Six hundred and thirty.
Six hundred and thirty, I'm sorry, yeah, six hundred and thirty thousand.
And it's for a pole building or a single bay?
Well, both, it's actually both, there's, I don't have the, in front of me, go ahead.
Twelve thousand square foot pole bar, cage drum bay.
Right.
All related to broadband.
Yes.
For securing material staging during broadband construction and to service for future needs, the broadband.
And it would potentially also be the node here, would be the node for the western part of the county for that overall project, so that's where everything would go to, so therefore would have to house, you know, the necessary equipment.
Even nodes that Medina Fiber specifically might need could be housed there?
Yep, everything, it would be all part of that project.
Okay.
It makes sense, obviously, to service not only that area, but anything expanded as part of that cooperative agreement with Lorraine Medina Rural Electric.
While we're on this topic, do we have any other projects that have timing concerns?
No, you won't, because you addressed MMHI, Great Relics, and the associations of minors, it's been limited, it's been discussed most because of the overall commitment and partnership that this is.
And at this point, we're, I know you're working with our county prosecutor and the court authority attorney to look at the memorandums of agreements between us and, for the parties, as well as between us and also the townships regarding ARPA funding for the broadband project. I met with Homer Township last night, went over what was presented before a couple weeks ago, and at this point, it's just working out all the level of detail. The idea of the plan is hopefully to have all the agreements, everything put together before the end of the year, and potentially the transfer of funds to the various accounts before the end of the year. The impact on the townships, many of them, it kind of overinflates their general funds, because this is, ARPA money is restricted-
Right.
-but it counts against them, I guess, in some of their provisions, so many of them would like to have that expensed out and the funds transferred to the project before the end of the year, and right now, they're working. You, they're, lawyers are working, I guess, to get, to make this thing happen, so.
Good. Anything else, Steve?
Nope, that's all I've got.
I just wanted to let you know, I hosted the Soil and Water Dinner the other night, and we did the little surprise to Jim Dieter, and he was extraordinarily grateful and appreciative, but we were appreciative of his service.
Anything else?
Nope.
So, before this meeting today, I attended the Local Corrections Board Board meeting, and they are looking for two board members, one from the defense community and one from the general public. So, if you know anybody that would be interested in serving on their board, it only meets a couple times a year, and deals mostly with the jail and probation.
So, are there any requirements for the local, of the general public?
I don't think so, I think the general public that would have interest in that.
And it is only about twice a year, right?
Right, right, and the only big issue, go back to budgets, Scott, is the vendor that is providing the drug testing is, because the number of drug tests that's gone down is coming back and giving, potentially giving notice that they're going to cancel the contract, or in lieu of that, they want like a, almost a hundred percent increase in the cost. Yeah, it's right now somewhere around eighteen, and they wanna increase it to something over thirty, and so, they're looking at options and trying to-
Economy's a skill, we're not cost-effective, are we?
Well, I actually suggested that they, maybe we could have a joint contract that would cover all of the courts in the county, just to that point.
Right.
And see if that would get us any better pricing, but, you know, the bottom line is that they're not gonna get any more business by doing that, because the current vendor already serves both Medina and-
So, the current testing, is it within the county, or do they send it out, and then, they collect the samples here and send them out daily?
That's what I understand.
Okay, so basically, it's being tested elsewhere.
Right, well, but they still have people-
On staff, right.
On staff, on site, that supervise the taking of samples.
Correct, all right, understand.
And Colleen made a comment, well, you know, can't we hire people to do it? Well, the issue is, yeah, you have to have a male and female.
Right.
And then you have to plan for vacations and-
Sure.
And sick time and all that, so you'd almost have to have four people to do it, and it really, I don't think that it would be cost-effective-
Then that is not cost-effective, no.
To take that over.
And there's, we only have one vendor that is potentially, or there's nobody else?
It did not sound like there was a overwhelming number of other vendors out there, but, you know, I did suggest that maybe they would get some other counties where they're doing, they're contracting, but they said Kahega County has seven, has their own lab, and has like seven toxicologists, but, you know, they have a-
Economy's a game.
Lot more people up there than we do here, so.
Plus, they're not using private, they're basically, that's a public sector lab, that's not a private sector.
Right, right.
And we're using the private sector, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it makes sense to bring in an outside, so that's all I have. If there's nothing else, we're gonna go into executive session, we will come out in adjourned meeting.
Okay, it is 10:54. We are out of executive session and back into general session. Steve, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Will call please.
Hambley.
Yes.
Swedden?
Yes. Be sure to vote today and have a great week. We'll see you next week. Thank you.